Energy and excitement bubbled from the first moment, from the first hello. It was overflowing and the idea that maybe we could come together and just start to envision and set the seeds for what a partnership would look like, to take this asset and understanding that since that early meeting, there's already been some great advancements made by Grace Harbor. We started to put together this presentation. I think we each individually sought direction from our boards to apply a little bit of staff work to get to this point and then come back and report out. So we have a PowerPoint presentation with some wonderful pictures and a couple of pretty cool videos that we want to show. The part of this conversation is to brainstorm and to hear from the policymakers, your thoughts and ideas and questions. We have staff that have been working hard at that site and transforming it over the last little while. And so we're here to really look at what are possibilities and then talk about next steps. Sam, I'll hand over to you to give some opening remarks as well.
Yeah, so I'm finishing up my first year with Grace Harbor County as the inaugural county administrator.
Congratulations.
It is the best job I've ever had. So because for the first time, everything I wish my bosses would do or the corporation would do or somebody else would do, now I just get to work directly with the decision makers and we've been doing amazing work together. Specific to the business at hand here, you know, I found it strange that in Thurston County, there is a Grace Harbor County Park, right? Don't you find it a little strange? Right? So I started inquiring and wondering and so forth. Well, it's a great source of pride for us Grace Harbor County folks, but I want to make this a great source of pride for Thurston County folks as well to have, you know, a shared park that's also in Grace Harbor County for Thurston County folks. So I think this is a real opportunity for us to collaborate. Previous to this job, I worked in Olympia for Employment Security Department as their Chief Information Officer. And so I know the Thurston County area pretty well because, you know, we had restaurants to go to and enjoy the amenities of Thurston County. And so I think if we can share our resources, share our energy and share our creativity, this can be a source of pride for all of us. I'm really looking forward to it. When Leonard approached us about this concept, I go, this is exactly the kind of collaboration and partnership we're looking for. So thank you for having us. And I just have to say, Matthew and Leonard and rest of the staff have been just doing most of the heavy lifting when it comes to the proposal and the presentation and so forth. We've been doing our part by doing all the heavy lifting of making sure the park actually looks presentable and you can start envisioning what the future looks like. Instead of having all these brushes and others whipping your face, now trail is cleared. You can actually ride your bicycle without having too much allergic reaction. So thank you so much for having us today.
Absolutely. And as we get started, just wanted to see if Commissioner Mejia or Commissioner Fornier, who are on that initial tour, if they had any opening thoughts about this park, understanding that their history in this area goes far, way further back than mine.
Sure. Thank you all so much for being here today. I am so excited about this. When I first got approached about this possibility, I was just blown away about like, I didn't even know about this either. And so just learning about the park, learning about the history of the park, how, you know, and about just the possibilities of it, the partnerships between Thurston and Grace Harbor. And the tour was, you know, even though I was dying with allergies, it was just really great to see because I think you really saw the the concept there. And I'm excited to see where we move forward with this. And yeah, I, you know, I'm just excited. And Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, I echo the same statements and it's really cool to be in the room. Well, I'm not in the room, but to be at the table with, you know, our neighboring commissioners. Vicki, welcome back. You're starting to frequent our meetings and it's cool. The, you know, it was, the opportunities are evident when you stand there and you watch the traffic like it's, it's like, it's untapped and it's, and it's really not even like managed or promoted, but there's a tremendous amount of traffic that goes into the base of Capitol Peak where there is like hundreds of mountain bikers that go there and, and meet and ride throughout the forest. And there's so much potential just right there and harnessing that energy and those, those visitors that, you know, to this thing, this amenity that's not even like built out for them. And I kind of said, this is almost like a, like at the being at the base of a ski slope. You know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity there for, for people to do, you know, kind of these eco adventures. And, you know, I'm really excited.
Chair from Grace Harbor, anything you want to, like to?
Sure. You know, we recently made some changes at the park in and of itself. So if you come by, we've taken the, the old name back. So it's referred to as, and I'm sure Wayne has seen, has seen this online, but it's referred to now as the Straddle Line Park because the park actually straddles Grace Harbor's county line with Thurston County line. And one of the things that I'm really excited about during these conversations is that I have a very good board that I'm working with, very progressive board, and we want to see great things happen. And that's been a kind of a change most recently. So I'm really looking forward to what we can do together. And the collaboration that we can have with other counties and other jurisdictions is fabulous. And I think that we have before us a fairly blank canvas that we can work together to, to do what we want and to make it into what our, both our counties would like to see it to become. We do have camping that's just started there. So we've, we've started taking reservations at the beginning of this month. And I expect that popularity of utilization. I've seen some posts online saying, well, they're open for camping now and this type of things. And people bring, being able to bring their bikes up and ride in the trails. So I think this is a great opportunity and a, and a particularly exciting opportunity to work with Thurston County. So I appreciate being at the table and thank you all.
Wonderful. So without further ado, we'll jump into the presentation. And as we do, I'd be remiss not to thank Matthew Rousley, Executive aide, Commissioner Fornier, who worked with the commissioner to put some of the details of the concept together for this presentation. So thank you, Matthew. All right, we can go to the next slide. Quick overview of the location. It's pretty self-explanatory. As mentioned, it does straddle between the county lines of where the park is located. That next slide. It provides us a little bit of an overview of the park prior to 2020, oh, prior to today. Thurston County created ORV Park Assistant Position along with and began researching the creation of ORV Park at their park-owned property. From 1977 to 1983, the original park development finished using Inter-Agency Committee for Outdoor Recreation Grant Funds, not known as Washington's, now known as Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. 1983 to 2001, TC operated the ORV Park, used as a small venue and mainly recreational ORV activities, almost every year leveraging IAC grants to fund operations, maintenance, and improvements. 2002, Thurston County Commissioners formalized the closure of the ORV Park due to operating costs, insurance premiums, and liability concerns. Go to the next slide. 2025, Thurston County Commissioners approved beading the ORV Park to Grace Harbor and transferred all ORV Park equipment to Grace Harbor. 2026, Grace Harbor began operating the ORV Park after approval of business plan in coordination with the IAC for funding support. From 2006 to 2023, Grace Harbor Park operations were leased to promoters for small motocross races, concerts, camps, park use for camping, recreation, and non-race activity during the non-scheduled days. In 2023, Grace Harbor does not renew the latest lease and closes the park, which has since been reopened, right?
Yes.
The closing was intended to allow for safety assessments, strategic planning, and park improvements. Sam, anything you want to add?
Well, so it's been two years. So the park reopened this month. We actually started taking reservations prior month. And it's been really a good response. As people get to know that it's been reopened because we get constant questions about, hey, when is it going to reopen? So not that it's open, it's popular, people are doing things. But one question continues to remain, what else is there to do besides go to Capitol Forest besides hang out and camp and enjoy, enjoy the view, right? So people are looking forward to doing more things. So we're coming up with some ideas. I think the list before us is, is, you know, great ideas. So we don't have to do everything all at once. We can incrementally do stuff together. So, you know, let's do what makes sense for us because people are asking, what else is there? Right? So we want to just keep it attractive for folks to use the park.
Wonderful. We'll go to the next slide. So a quick overview of how we got to today. Again, starting with that tour back in beautiful June 21st, 2024, and then both Sam and, well, before Sam got here, respectively, working with our commission boards to get direction. Then Sam jumping on board and joining the conversation. And then us looking to talk about in September, discuss potential pathways and interests for the ORV Park's future. And in January, the group reconvened to brainstorm further and discuss boards' interest in agreement. There's a lot of interest and opportunities for the ORV Park. It really is, like you said, a blank canvas with opportunity. Next slide. Sam, maybe you want to cover this and talk a little bit about what has been done to date?
Right. So, you know, two years that the park was closed seems to be a long time. And especially since people are expecting all those other things. So we opened it up for reservation. We had 300 attendees, kind of as a trial run. And it was incredibly positive response. So we did a tremendous amount of work. Mark Cox and his crew just worked constantly. I'm sorry to say, I have yet to visit the park directly. We'll do that today. But just driving by it, I could see the people there. So I think just even with the, just the camping that we have and access to the Capitol Forest has been a hit. We chose to change the name because it's, we're, we're, we're not having the motocross racing anymore for many reasons. So we want to be very intentional and very careful and thoughtful about what we introduce into the park. And if we could do it jointly, so this, this 155 spots opening up for just for camping is just the beginning. So with this blank slate, this blank canvas that we have, I think we can start dreaming together. That'd be great.
We were excited when we saw these pictures because from year over year, the work that you've done to the camp sites and locations and the sign that you have up shows a lot of great progress. So very beautiful and great job moving that forward. The next slide, I believe we have a video we want to show. Can I ask real quick about the RVs? So like, you know, 155 spots. And then I saw a picture of a line of RVs. Is it like some RVs and some non-RVs or there are all 155 RVs could be there? Or what does that look like?
The majority of the sites are actually primitive sites, but the sites that you saw where they were all lined up together, those are the power and water sites. And we only have 20 of those. That would be something in the future that we'd like to change and add a lot more power and water sites and get the dump station operational again so people can dump the, the septic when they leave.
But even with the primitive camping sites, they have access to shower. I mean, they can just stay there as long as they like, mainly because it's quite affordable, right? So people have been just hanging around, which is great.
I was going to comment. We did have ORV activities previously and very similar to Thurston Counties when you changed and shifted the park over to Grace Harbor County. We ended that because of, one, we were going to do some improvements. We've done some waterline improvements and such at the park, but also because of insurance and liability and getting insurance and getting a promoter that can, that can get insurance. And as you, you may or may not know, both counties, both our counties are members of the Washington Counties Risk Pool. And that type of activity is not covered on our insurance and our, and our MCL. So it's been something that we've talked about. We'd like to bring some other insurance or activities in that wouldn't have that barrier or that we could, maybe different than other locations and that we could promote more broadly. So, thank you, Leonard.
Any other questions before we move on to this point? All right. Go to the next slide. Play the video.
We need the cool music. What does county commissioner even do?
I should have seen this a month, six months ago.
We know the lyrics to the songs. We can sing it if you like, Leonard.
Okay, go to the next slide.
Did Wayne select that song? I guess.
So looking at some of the strengths and opportunities, this is, I think, the real potential in this conversation. As Commissioner mentioned when we got started, the location of that with the through traffic on the highway creates an amazing spot for folks to see that and to be drawn in. There's obviously a need for open space, recreation, economic opportunity. The connection to Capitol Forest is huge. It already gets a high usage regardless if there's any additional amenities. Additional amenities only draw folks and create an additional component to when folks are looking at what they're going to do. And I mean, I've been very impressed with Capitol Forest, the amount of trails, how large it is, and all the different uses that you can do there. And this really is, from our perspective, a one-of-a-kind asset in the state of Washington that if developed right, it could have a draw regionally for folks to come out. I'll pause here and see if Grace Harbor folks want to add any comments.
Well, I think that's very similar to what we've talked about too, is to, it is an excellent space. It is close to I-5. You're minutes away from the corridor there. And it can be, utilizing that blank canvas analogy again, is it can be anything we want it to be, anything that, that would attract people to this area. You know, they're going to go through Olympia and Thurston County, get groceries, or they may head to Montesano and have dinner. There's just opportunities for growth and economic development throughout. And how you've listed for open space, recreation, et cetera, I think that's a big draw to this area that people need.
Commissioner Mejia or Commissioner Fornier, any comments you want to make about this potential space?
Yeah, I just, I want to say that like, you know, part of what I, kind of, I don't know, kind of like a hidden value or something, or something like that is, is, you know, when we've had the discussions about how we utilize our forest land and we've had public come in and talk about, hey, you know, we want to look at alternative models for kind of the, the economic kind of usage of forest land. And they've talked about promoting, you know, people visiting the forest instead of us, you know, logging the forest and trying to find ways to benefit from the forest existence instead of just, you know, cutting it down. And in my mind, this is us exploring opportunities to take action on those or to look into those requests. So if we, you know, we want to start utilizing our forests in different ways than, than, you know, than cutting them down and selling the timber, I think we need to take serious looks at ways that we use it for outdoor recreation. And this is the beginning of that in my mind.
I'll just chime in. You know, I moved here as a big hiker, outdoor person, didn't grow up here. So I came here and you're looking at the map and you see Capitol State Forest and you don't really know what to do with it because it's not, I mean, if you know this area, you get to know what can be done there. It's like, it's like a treasure hunt. You know, it's a mystery because it's not set up. I mean, it's about DNR and logging and they allow access. And so you can figure out how you can access it and where the trip, but it's not promoted that way. It's not, that's not the purpose. So to have a focal point like this where we could really, you know, people love, I mean, people love to have places where you can hike and not have to drive 30 miles on forest roads and beat up your car and get lost. So having a place like this, that's like, you know, if you look at the map, it's just like right off the highway and it, but it's right then. And then it's a, it's a starting point. You could park your car and boom, you're in the forest, you're on the trails. It could be promoted in a way that would allow people to understand what Capitol State Forest is and it would enhance its, its, its utility within our community for all the things Commissioner Fornier was talking about. We really, we lack that right now.
If any of you are hikers, you know, parking your car at the trailhead, you know, that's a prime target for break-ins. And so this is safe, right? And you don't have to go anywhere. It's monitored. There's a 24-hour, you know, residence there as well. And so I think there's just some huge opportunities that very rare, you know, this is going to be a unique thing for us and maybe for the state of Washington.
Absolutely.
We also have 12 and a half miles hiking trails within the park grounds. And that's the big draw. Not only is that great for downhill mountain bikers, but for hikers, people that just want to get out in the forest and see the wildlife. That's really been our focus is get the park open, come up with a good reservation system, and then start working on amenities. So now we're at the point where we've opened up the majority of the trails and now we're looking for that next step. How do we promote our trail systems? Because we got, got the park open, but people need something to do when they're there. And that's the only real complaint that we've had. It's like, well, what can you offer us besides just access into Capitol Forest? So now we're talking about e-bikes, bringing those to the park. That's a kind of an untapped resource that really could have a big draw and disc golf course and really starting to promote the hiking. So.
We have, I mean, you guys have half of Capitol State Forest. You may know this, but I know I've met with groups, we have community groups, trail running and mountain biking, organized groups, they do events and, you know, they use Capitol State Forest, different pieces of it. But yeah, that's there. That, that, that community infrastructure is there to, to build on.
Well, and we also have the Grace Harbor County Fairgrounds, which we do a lot of events there. But a lot of weekends are taking up. So now we're getting people calling us about hosting events at our park. I had one the other day, 5,000 BMW motorcycles would like to come see us in 2027 and do a national event there. We're not sure if we can handle that yet, but, you know, it's definitely of interest to us. But we see now the, the next step for us will be doing something with the motocross track, turning that into more of a multi-use space, festival space, concert venue space. So that's, that's our future right now is get amenities open up and start looking how we can host those big events and really draw in a lot of people to the community. And that'll help us all, Thurston County and Grace.
I think you're right on the money with that. You know, like the, the location is perfect for camping because you're going to get every, you know, every day, part of, you know, the seasonal, you're going to get people on the way to the beach that need a place to stop before they get there. They don't want to sit, you know, two days in traffic when they travel from, you know, parts unknown. And so that, that is there. But opening it up for multi-day music festivals, that'll, that, that would be a game changer. And I think there's a big market for that. I mean, our county manager can probably talk about his experience with like Live Nation and, and, you know, kind of music festivals in his previous county where they had a lot of success.
Yeah. And Commissioners, I think that's my perspective when looking at this park is the opportunity for us to mix camping with open space with the access to the forest and all of that provides is, is a unique opportunity. You often have those pieces disconnected from each other, but to have them all connected and then a lot of space to work with, that's already been approved for a park, really affords us setting a vision for this that we may not achieve in all at once. But as Sam said, we start to incrementally move towards that and build a regional asset that has all these different components. has all these different components. It could become the key location for a lot of folks that are doing spring, summer and fall events in our, in our area and want to come to the Pacific Northwest.
We've had, oh, I'm sorry.
No, please.
We've had in our area where groups have requested to utilize either our Twin Bridges Park with Spotty Fest and they come in and bring in a portable stage and have music over, I think they start Friday night and then they go through Saturday and early Sunday morning they break down. That area at, at Twin Bridges Park would not be able to facilitate too much of a larger group for parking and whatnot, but the Stradeline Park would. And you could have something like the Oregon Jamboree, kind of what Wayne was talking about. You could have some of these events that would draw people, I mean, I have family that go from here down to the Oregon Jamboree or down to the Gorge for events. And if we could, especially in the summer months that we have here, it's so beautiful, and be able to do something very similar to that, that would be providing recreation activities for our community, but also generating revenue and economic development for our communities as well.
You go to the next slide.
I think there's a video there as well. This video is to show what you were referring to, the former range track and the potential for opportunities as we just kind of look through that space.
Someone's got to sing.
Hit it, Ty. So that would be the concert venue area?
Yes, yeah, that whole area, that's, I don't know, 15 acres or so, it's a pretty big space. The nice thing about it is it slopes up the hill, so every seat would be a good seat. We're thinking that it would be like, the flat area down in front, we would leave that all flat and then as it gradually goes up, have that all be like a grassy area where people could lay out their blankets or bring their picnic chairs or, you know, whatever.
Anybody play against?
Like Woodland Park Zoo, concert amphitheater there?
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a natural amphitheater and then the backdrop is all of these trees and forests, so it's really a beautiful place. Or you could do it the other way, you could use, utilize the grandstands and have people out in the flat area and go back that way as well.
And when you combine that with the availability of camping, now you're talking about the festival dynamic, which is a multi-day, higher, you're able to charge higher ticket prices, get more amenities in there, which ultimately means that someone that's going to be promoting that, their ability to make additional revenue goes through the roof. And so looking at those components of how do you put that together so that as Gray's Harbor Chair mentioned, it is, it does become an economic engine that then helps sustain the park. And that's really where our minds are trying to head towards, is how do we take this asset and create opportunities that, so that it can feed itself and we can take the dollars that are created, reinvested into the park and continue to beautify it and add so that it becomes year over year, an additional draw for folks. It's absolutely a beautiful space.
You know, you could also look at the amphitheater that they have up in the Auburn area that they show concerts at. And then there's an outdoor amphitheater up in Darrington for anyone that likes bluegrass music, that's what I was raised on. And my dad, back in the 70s, started the Bluegrass Festival up in Darrington. And they have a very open area where you do exactly, they have a stage that's, that is movable. And then they have seating in chairs and then they have just these concrete big steps that you would see in other amphitheaters and you put your blanket out or your camp chair, they're wide enough to be able to do that. But I think that looking at what, what options are available is going to be key. And I think those are limitless, I really do. I think there's a lot that you could do, just find out what you think is going to fit best there.
Yeah. In the context I came from, we did the Huck Finn Jamboree, that was a high desert event that then came down into a regional park because it had availability for camping. And so they were able to get 15,000 folks into a urban park. A lot of logistics, we worked with the flood authority to use parking and then gave a lot of free tickets to the neighbors all surrounding.
Smart, yeah.
And noise, noise concerns. That's why when I saw this and saw the proximity between two counties and urban centers and a place where you can go, where it's far, far enough away where you can feel you're out of the, the main mix of things and that mixes camping and then during the day you could go and do different events. Leads us to the next slide, which is the idea of what do we do to start branding this and creating an understanding of how do we take that opportunity? And so we kind of, at a staff level, we're kicking around, what if this becomes an eco-adventure park? We go to the next slide. Understanding that these types of experiences, while obviously there are insurance implications that we have to be very mindful of, if we were to start to look at how do we work with private partners and do a private-public partnership to see what we can do to invest, obviously it may not start from day one, but setting the ground for the ability to have some of the amenities that are listed there, we think is very much within the realm of possibility. Any questions or thoughts or comments?
Maybe we don't have axe throwing, for example. Zip lines might be good.
All cutting or anything like that.
You can come to Ho-Quim for that. We have loggers, we have loggers playdate.
I'm joking, because everywhere I go, this axe, there's like, there's like now mobile units that go around to festivals and have axe throwing. It's like, wow, it's. And like storefronts and stuff, but yeah, it seems, yeah, it seems like overthinking the risk pool and like.
Well, but the city, the Ho-Quim does one. I mean, they have people that actually, Mark, I know, has been there, but they'll, an event where they climb up the pole and then they have to go up and lock the top off and come down. And, and it's speed timed. That's just one event, but they have husband and wife saw bucking, they do all sorts of things, log rolling in the water. There's, and you can take components of those and bring them here and, and create something. And I think that it's, there's a big push for things like that, family events.
And I think if you were to capitalize on the fact that if you were to do glamping, camping options that have a number of recreational amenities for families, different groups, the trail gives, affords the ability to do different use for, whether it's horseback riding, dirt bike riding, mountain biking. To, to look at how do we market all of that and capture opportunities? One of the things that happened when we were driving back on the trail and the trees were whipping Commissioner Mejia in the face, was that we saw all these little beautiful opportunities with ponds where you could put cabins around and it could become this little sanctuary respite for folks to rent those out, pull up, have everything there. There is a market for that type of, of camping where, in, in the park like this, you could have different tiers of camping. Like I said, very primitive camping for those that want to do that. There's a market for that, all the way up to, you pull up and everything is set, you just open the door and you sit and, and you're ready to go.
If, if you look up Pampered Wilderness on, online, it's a, it's a company that is embedded within Miller-Sylvania State Park. It's a private company that has various glamping sites and they're just fancy tents, but they're booked out some, like around two years in advance. And, and it is, it's a, you know, there's various levels within Miller-Sylvania that you can camp at. And so there, you know, it kind of creates an experience for everybody.
If, if I may, could I add something? I sit on the Chehalis Space and Fisheries Task Force and I had mentioned the Stradeline Park to them and they said that there was possibility for them to release fish that could be fished out of one of the ponds. And so another opportunity for people to get out there and enjoy the trails and, and take their kids and, and fish.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, I recently was made aware of a glamping site just outside of Mount Rushmore and the ability just to drive up and have everything taken care of and then to have amenities around. I mean, there is, there is such a market for that, for families, that this place, being a blank canvas, us coming together and setting a vision for that, working with our combined legislative delegation on what a investment in a regional amenity could bring for this entire area, that could bring families together, arts and culture together, eco-awareness, working with the state so that this becomes an interpretive park. So people can walk around and learn about Capital Forest, learn about DNR's practices and sustainability in Washington State. This could have a national or even a global draw if we were to put the pieces together. And so part of us coming together, we wanted to set the vision of, this is such an amazing asset, let's shoot high and have great aspirations. Doesn't necessarily have to all be county dollar investment. If we package this right, I believe there, there are investors and operations that would look at this as a beautiful asset platform to say, well, maybe we could do this, maybe we could do that. Where I came from, past situation, I knew that Live Nation looked at one of the parks because of its camping availability to do festivals and it really didn't even have an operational amphitheater. It was dated and old and they said, we don't really care about that. We're not going to do anything in the amphitheater. We're going to have these festivals that draw a much larger crowd because people are after multi-day experiences and not just going in and coming out after you fight traffic and everything, it's just not worth it, especially if you're traveling from a distance. That's really what this park affords when we look at it. And we're here today just to kind of kick that around. I want to thank the Commissioners that, you know, as a new county manager, invited me along to a tour. That's how we stumbled upon this. I want to thank a new incoming, first ever county administrator that came in and said, sure, we like, I like to partner with people and let's, let's see what the possibilities are. And then staff have been working hard at keeping the campfire burning and working things through to make sure that we didn't lose sight of it. So that's where we're at. I think we have a couple more slides, but I really think there's a lot of opportunity as we look at this. You go to the next slide. Again, just kind of the concept of an eco-adventure park. Imagine the Great Wolf Lodge, but something that's real and outdoors, where folks can come and fish and just fill in the amenities, minus axe throwing, per Commissioner Menzner. Next slide, please. So those are some of the partners that if we had a vision and started to look at opportunities, I love the picture of the amphitheater down below. If you put that structure in the current location and planted some grass seed, that would effectively be what we had. And if you'd bring folks, promoters out there and showed them that, there would be a huge interest when you combine that with the amount of camping that we have available to run a multi-day festival. And I think we have our last slide. Funding opportunities, just things that we're thinking about. Grants, public-private partnership as mentioned, DNR partnership and funding requests, congressional funding requests, et cetera. Next slide. Wouldn't it be awesome if Thurston County and Gray's Harbor could put their stake in the ground and say, we have an eco-adventure park that is a unique resource, not only for the state, but for the nation?
I like the connected counties concept.
I do, too. I do, too. And I think that that's, that's a big, big deal for me, from my perspective as a Commissioner, is to be able to partner in with other agencies and bring all ideas together around the table because I think we can talk about an amphitheater and I'm thinking, okay, the photo of that down below with the grass area in that photo, and you might have some sort of entertainment or what going on, but in other areas of the park, you have the things that the kids can also enjoy. And we don't have anything like that nearby. So I really appreciate the county's willingness to include us in these conversations and see how we might be able to work together and bring something to our area that isn't experienced elsewhere, at least on the west side.
I also think it makes for a greater case for funding when we collaborate with multiple counties. So I, I think we have such a great opportunity for funding sources.
Absolutely. I, I think, and it's rare that I think counties collaborate like in this kind of, in this kind of spirit. So I, I, you know, we're, we're going to get a lot of support if we're working together under a shared vision and sharing resources and things, I feel.
I agree, Wayne.
So we have some suggested next steps. They're more for consideration and conversation. We go to the next slide. Direction to begin to work on an ILA between counties about what would it look like to partner for profit sharing, cost sharing, joint ask for grants, collaboration and bringing the park to life. Direction to begin scoping out a market study and the details of the costs of that. There are national conventions where folks that work and interact in amusement parks and park space and open spaces all convene a couple times a year. And to be able to go to those opportunities with a blank canvas and say, we have, we want you to come out and take a look. Again, it may not materialize into an opportunity day one, but you can get conversations started that can lead to other people being made aware and could bring opportunities to us. Direction to begin conversation about designing a narrative for marketing purposes and what that looks like. What does it look like to begin to communicate that Gray's Harbor and Thurston County are working together on the first ever eco-adventure park? Direction to begin connections with potential partners to analyze potential interests outside of this area, in this area. How do we look at taking what we've built previously, learning from those lessons and going forward to making sure that we have, like Commissioners have mentioned, a multifaceted approach to bring in revenue and not putting all our eggs in one basket of just ORV or just one thing, but really utilizing the diversity of the park to bring a diversity of amenities. With that, open discussion and we'll pass it back over. Kim, I mean, Sam, anything you want to add?
Well, I just wanted to thank Thurston County for hosting us here. During these meetings we've had, I felt really bad because Leonard and his staff were doing all the proposals and all the heavy lifting and all the logo creation and all the ideas and so forth. So I'm so glad that we were able to actually get the park open. We're doing our part. Right? So we want this to be an equal partnership. And even when the logo was designed, Matthew was very kind, put Gray's Harbor County first. I said, no, no, we should both be first, we should both be together. I don't want us, you know, to be, you know, to be dominating one or the other in any other way. We want to be equal partners, right? But also we want to do our equal share as well. So thank you for getting this kickstarted, getting it going and then letting us kind of come along and be that comparable, compatible partner with you.
I also think that there is, when Commissioner Miller spoke about funding, I think it's true that when you have something, especially as what we've talked about, that can be very dynamic, very attractive to our entire region, and you come together as two counties to go to RCO Board or whatever the case may be, there's strength in numbers, if you will, but it's also representing the partnership. And the state, when we've gone to the legislature to ask for money, as, as Ty knows for, Commissioner Menzner knows for flood projects and such, is that, that the total voice speaks volumes and the legislature wants to see that we as counties or whatever entity we're representing has skin in the game, whether that's contributing some of our own money. And I think that this is going to be a great relationship to be able to move forward and do something huge for our communities. Thank you for putting this slideshow together.
Yeah, one thing I'll just add, you know, with 12 acres, just with, I mean, 12 miles of trails just within the park, it'd be amazing for us to work with endurance races like Spartan races to make this one of their signature event homes. If you diversify enough and have enough of these items taking place, that becomes a revenue stream. And then once folks come and experience your park, that's the greatest advertising. Now it's on the map and they make it a destination for future vacations or considerations. Now it's on the map and they make it a destination for future vacations or considerations.
What are the, we've had before there, Mark, what are those races called where they're, they're like an obstacle course, they're like a dirty, a dirty dance?
We had, we hosted that before at the park.
And it was very, huge.
Thousands of people.
And so there's, I mean, there's lots of options, the options are almost endless, so I think that's great. Thank you so much for having us today.
I'll turn back over to you, Chair.
We got a couple minutes, I have a question. So, we didn't really talk about this report.
Oh, the master plan.
Yeah, and I'm just kind of curious what, I mean, you obviously did a lot of, I mean, a lot of effort went into this report, and how do you see that? I kind of scanned it, I kind of was looking at the summary and kind of high-level look at it myself, but...
So, so, how does that fit into what we're talking about here today?
Well, so, Commissioner Rayes might have a better idea on this, and definitely Mark will, because my first day at work, I was throwing this master plan, I go, what?
Yeah, it was last August, so it's...
Do you want me to speak to it?
Please, please.
So, we developed the master plan to have an idea of how we were going to deal with camping, because at the time, we were still going to hire a promoter to do the motocross racing.
Okay.
So we didn't put anything in there about what we potentially could do with the trails or with the track itself, and we just focused, how could we maximize the camping and bring in all those amenities, clubhouse, more power and water sites? Ultimately, we can get a lot more sites there than the hundred and fifty-five. Those are just our numbered sites that we have right now.
Yeah.
But we could probably host three fifty to four hundred people at that park for camping. And this was just a couple different options for us to consider on, and how, what we would turn the park into, or what it would look like as far as the camping goes, and what our needs would be for power, water, and things like that for the future. But really, I think we, we need to look at the next steps if we move on this project and probably do a master plan for kind of that bigger, broad idea.
This was scoped as sort of a different...
Well, we would want to do something that would be a common plan that would include both counties and the ideas that we've talked about and different things. We talked, you know, we did have ORV during this process, we've decided that's not a route that we want to go down for a variety of reasons, but we've talked about zip lining and, and lots of various ideas, nothing concrete at this point, that's why I think it's a perfect time to work with Thurston to see what all ideas are and how we can make and facilitate many of those. So this was a beginning draft, we obviously would want to do something that would encompass Thurston.
I'm glad I asked that question, because like, to the extent that I've had any hesitation about this, and I didn't get to go on the tour, this is in my district actually, but, you know, the, the thing is, as you, as you explore Capital Forest, there's like, you know, there's logging activity, and that happens. And then, one of the most popular trails in Thurston County is Myima Falls, and there's a shooting range right there. And I've gone with my family where you feel like you're in a war zone, you know? And I've actually had to leave, like, we started a hike with my daughter, and it's like, this is not the experience, like, we left and went somewhere else, which, you know, is like killing half a day, but had to be done, it was that, it was that bad. So, enhancing the, the area with things that are super noisy was a little bit like, adding something where, you know, we're going to add another area where there's going to be lots of noise and motorized activity was, I had, you know, I kind of wanted to hear, you know, kind of what the... But so, so kind of focusing away from that toward activities that we're gonna, you know, quieter activities that we're going to enhance, like, and, 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 you know, like, those things are happening that are going to happen, we can't control, we're not in control of Capital State Forest, but to the extent that we're going to go big with something, I like this direction that we're talking about versus thinking that we're going to go to a huge ORV motocross race center, which is what, I wasn't really sure what exactly we were headed with.
It's, it isn't anything that the current, I don't want to speak for the other commissioners, but I, I don't believe it's anything currently that we're discussing to move forward and into. And like I said, you from Thurston County have also hit on a couple of the topics that we, that are the reasons why we're not doing it, insurance is one and liability is another. And I think that there could be much more done year-round at the park. And those, those type of racing opportunities are oftentimes seasonal. But, you know, if you think about having, a concert could be loud, most of those are done in the evening hours, you can have other things in there. I wasn't aware of the, of the shooting range, all, that, that's interesting, that's got to be on the Capital Forest DNR side.
It is.
It's not on our property.
No, no, it's quite a ways away from us.
Bordeaux area kind of over there, it's a, it's a major access point for, from Thurston County to a lot of really good trails. And like I say, there needs to be opportunities for people to do different things, and that particular pairing is, like, doesn't work too well for a lot of people.
I think we're looking more at like e-bikes and mountain bikes versus motorcycles. They can bring them into the park and then ride up into Capital Forest, but I, I think that that opens up the opportunity for a larger market, other than, the motorcycles is just so focused on, on kind of niche market, it's not really, it's not for the masses, it's expensive.
But it's, it would be allowable on a recreational level, we're just not going to have events and tracks that's...
No racing.
Yeah, motocross or racing, you would have to have a promoter that already has deals to bring races in for it to be even viable. And it is very seasonal, and the problem is that when it's not happening, there's a lot of downtime, and they tend not to want other folks to mess with their track because of the investment they've made, so...
Yeah, it seems not less, less compatible with other things when you've got a track like that.
It's almost like it's that, and that's all it is. And we have a racetrack adjacent to our fairgrounds, within the fairgrounds property. And that's, it's limited use, it's limited just to that during the summer, summer months, spring/summer months that they have races there. But I think it would be great to have an eco-friendly, all-encompassing, family-oriented place for people to go that has activities for all ranges of age of people.
And my understanding is, is that it was never when we leased it out a revenue generator under, under that circumstance. So, I, I think we're all looking for ways that we can add revenue opportunities to our counties.
Wasn't a revenue operator for us.
Right.
I don't, I didn't know what the...
The county didn't make money, the county lost money.
So I don't know what the promoters, how well they did and such, but it's not, it's not something that we're interested in.
We're going to take out the motocross track, aren't we?
Yes, that's the plan.
It's already planned and funded to take that out.
We're planning it now.
The funding may be, request may be coming.
Commissioner Fornin, I saw your hand a moment ago.
Yeah, everybody just kind of took the words out of my mouth. I think there's a lot of lessons learned from both counties in kind of the, the, the one single business model concept, and, you know, what I'm hearing from everybody else is that, you know, there's strength in diversifying all the different amenities and opportunities and niche groups that we can make this available to, and it'll make, it'll make for a more kind of sustainable park.
I would also like to reiterate that we are, our focus is on making this a family-friendly park and a place where people can come and relax and have a restful vacation. We don't allow riding of motocross or anything, any off-road vehicles within the park grounds. It's only out the gates and up into Capital Forest, so that will continue to be our focus. Also, the motorcycle crowd, they like to party, and we're not party people anymore. So that, that's going to be a little bit of a challenge for us as we move forward, but so far, it's working very well.
I like to party. When it's appropriate and, and the appropriate time, I think Georgia likes to party, Rick, he can really, you know...
Partying in moderation is great.
Thank you so much for having us again.
Chair, I'm ready to make a motion, give staff direction, if that's okay with you.
We put the, the direction there, so.
So Chair, I will move to give direction to the county manager and staff to begin work on an ILA between the counties of Thurston County and Grace Harbor, and to begin scoping out a market study, details and cost. And to begin conversations about designing narrative for marketing purposes and connections with potential partners to analyze potential interest.
Second.
Motion, the second, to take the steps outlined on the slide as Commissioner Mekia laid out. Any discussion on that motion from Thurston County Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner Mekia, I appreciate that. I would have all board members here, I would entertain a motion that we assign County Administrator Sam Kim and Mark Cox, our Facilities and Economic Development Director, to take the lead in working with Thurston County to get a complimentary inter-local agreement to Grace Harbor County for consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have motion second to have County Administrator and Facilities Economic Development Director to work with Thurston County leadership to bring a mutually agreed-upon inter-local agreement to the county for consideration, any discussion?
I'm just super excited.
Yes, hearing, appreciate that, I'll go ahead and call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes.
Good job, Leonard.
Congratulations on your anniversary.
Thank you.
Any other items before we adjourn the meeting? Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
To meet everybody that I hadn't met before, and hopefully we'll be in touch again to work on this awesome project. We're adjourned.